All right, your attention is 6:30. We're going to go ahead and call our Loudoun City Council and wave workshop to order. First item on the agenda is citizens' input. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Walk up to the new podium, use the new microphone. Just come up and state your name.
Yeah, what's your first?
Have to straighten that thing up.
My name's Ken Schultz. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to come and address you and the council about some of our building maintenance and the cosmetics of our buildings. We're blessed that we've got a new building to come to. You know, if we look at all the concern and talk about the old city hall, it really wasn't talked about very good at the time. Now that we've got this new building, we've also got another utility building next door. I want to see our city council put some money in the budget, take care of some more stuff. You know, if that means getting new carpet every couple of years, we need to do that. I've had the opportunity to work for the city on many projects in their buildings. And just recently, I was in the fire and police department doing some work that we still need to do work. But there's cabinets in there that are falling apart, hanging down. You know, I've talked to both Chief Webb and I've also talked to Chief Brubaker, and they just said that, you know, the budget's tight for them. So I understand that, and I told them that I'd be coming and speaking to you today about that, that we need to try to make things look better. We all want our city to grow, and we need to take care of things. You know, first impressions good on the outside, but when they walk in a building, we want them to look this way. When I was at the fire department last week, they had training class going on. So we're using our buildings, and we've got people coming from out of town. There were some firefighters from Karnes and Alcoa. We want them to look at our stuff and say, you know, we're taking good care of what we've got, huh? We don't want to just let go of pieces. So I know it's a budget item. I'm sure that we need to put more money into it. Maybe we even need to look at putting some, a building maintenance guy together. So I understand talking to some of the utility boarders, because sitting in utilities is pretty much one. We've got an operations center out there that's probably never been painted. There's floor tiles coming up in there as well. We've got these nice buildings we need to take care of. So I'd like to just have you all look at considering that, and we can maybe come up, and I'll help offer myself to make any solutions, you know, that we can do to do that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ken. Tim, have any questions for Ken?
I have a question to talk about.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ken.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else want to address the council? This time, I want to introduce County Mayor Bradshaw. Come forward and discuss the local agreement that presented to the utility board earlier today.
I'll be the one to follow. So I didn't, Mayor Harris said I came to the utility board earlier, and I'll be the first one to admit twice today I've been the old utility board board, including just now. So I guess old habits die hard. And talking with city, with city council, the county commission this past Monday, and the recommendation they've asked me to come and present to the utility board as well as city council would be that we go ahead and move forward with the dollar per square foot rental agreement. And then the city, the big hangup was that commission wasn't 100% comfortable with assuming total responsibility, especially when it came to big-ticket items, you know, in case an arched ditch or a ceiling fail, wall fail, whatever might happen. We, they just weren't comfortable absorbing the whole building for the next two years. And so we were perfectly willing to spend the dollar per square foot rent per month. That does not hurt the county in any way. It is a different line than what we used to rebuild the courthouse with, and so it's not going to be anything off the backside. We've got a good amount in that line. We ran that away pretty quick, but we've still got plenty enough to pay that rent to the utility board. And so with it coming down to both the utility board and city council, I wanted to present you all with that. And I've got a very preliminary drawing. I know the, we've talked about maybe some use of the property, rear side. I don't have an electronic copy yet, but a hard copy I'll be happy to leave, let y'all get a gander at later. Keep in mind that if we are able to move forward with this, it could be at least two stories, and I'll leave it at that. So, but I'll be happy to look at this for you all, take a look at it for the meeting. And I'll have, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, best of you.
Good, thank you, Mayor Bradshaw. You want to have any questions for Mayor Bradshaw? And I guess it's correct to assume that this would mostly fall on the utility board. It's the gas department's building, correct?
That's correct, Mayor. It would be CDN utility.
But it would have to be specific about who's responsible for some of these charges.
It is, and you know, like every day, you know, anything happens with the cost of business, you know, that's where you're, it's a broken window, somebody does something crazy, something like that, actually, that's us. If ceiling falls in for no reason, then the commission has to, you know, in and in something terrible like that happened, they're a little hesitant, so.
And you spoke to the utility board about maybe a dollar amount, a cap or something, you know, they could work.
Yeah, or something in the language where we can talk about, you know, I don't know, I'll let the attorney secretary sit and turn it for that, but we can cap it or wherever, whoever we want to approach it.
Okay.
I think the commission's very open for it.
Want to have any questions? And this is the request of the commission, is Mayor Bradshaw?
Yes, so Mayor Commission's request, my pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda consideration is handicap parking near the fountain, and I think this is from a citizen's request, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for not having a full PowerPoint displayed for this meeting. Our contractor, senior or audiovisual system, Technical Solutions, was here working until about 4:00 P.M. this afternoon, so we weren't sure if we were going to have it or not, but we're pleasantly surprised to have it, and we're grateful for their work. But included in your packet, and I'll describe it as best I can for the audience, are two options for additional handicap parking downtown. This does come from a citizen request, so we wanted to answer it properly. You will find centered on the block on Grove Street, that's the Fountain Square block, a proposed handicap parking place. In addition, as you round the corner off of Grove onto Wharf Street, you will see in your packet additional option there.
Right, and both of those, that way they could access that wheelchair ramp down the sidewalk?
Yes.
With both those spots. Everybody sees the proposed spaces. Do you have any questions? Sure, Ellis can answer them if.
My concern is the spot right there on front of Fat House. God, it's awful hot. I've seen so many people almost get hit right there, you know, with their doors open or something, and that's just.
You've measured that, correct, Ellis?
Yeah, dude, it does measure.
Measure. Now, it's not van accessible, I guess, but.
No, exactly, not van accessible.
Right.
But it is close to the road there.
That would be my only concern about that one is I wouldn't want to make it a handicap accessible unit and then get somebody hurt in that spot, because I don't like that.
Well, about, we have it on the opposite side of the road there on this, what is that? Wharf Street? No. Yeah, Wharf Street.
Well, that's just.
If you had one on here across the street there, you know where the parking is, so far where the DPT is? If you had one there also, and you're talking about, takes away, you know, still need that thing, but she's talking about, you know, have that maybe.
Remember how the traffic's so close to the.
That's on, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what's happening.
All the other option would be across the street there, by the old bank.
Yeah, the first spot there.
Could you make that van accessible?
I don't think that would make sense.
What's proximity of the ones that we have down there now? Are they up on the other side of the bank, on the other, any other part of it?
I think they're on up the street, aren't they? They're on up the street.
Same here.
Yeah, up there next to the funeral, you know, and there's one in the park lot behind you. Yeah.
And that's a bit far from downtown.
Yeah. And, you know, it come from, it's a request from a lot of patrons that visit the restaurant there.
Yeah. And not everybody, I mean, I mean, that's not van accessible, so it wouldn't be an issue of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just going to be cars, basically. So that's the two proposed locations of going across the street, y'all think would be better, something we'd have Ellis look at.
So we're just looking at one spot?
No, we two.
Okay, we are.
Those two spots.
Yeah, we two spots.
Because of both those spots, you could access that.
That ramp.
That ramp, yeah.
I suggest you tackle it in the form of the motion, whether you want one, one spot on either road or both spots. You simply address it, and then how you make the motion.
And it will take, you know, public hearing and two readings and those kind of things.
I totally agree. I don't think there's enough handicap parking in town.
Right, and that's, that's what generated the discussion. So this will, this will be on the agenda for Monday night?
We'll migrate that to the regular meeting.
Okay. Any other questions about that? In the meantime, do we want to have Ellis look at those?
I would have like to add another spot.
I'd like so.
And give us another one across the street.
Okay. Then we can, that's, Mayor Ross said make that in the motion, which one we want to address. Next item on the agenda is the Blair Ben paving bid.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a key dot project in partnership with the city of Loudoun. It's at the 80/20 percentage levels, city of Loudoun being 20%. This is a publicly bid project. It's resurfacing of Blair Ben Road, just in the industrial park across the river. There were three bids, APAC Atlanta, Duracap Asphalt, and Patty Construction. APAC Atlanta Ink came in with the low bid $84,504.86.
Okay. I know this had to be rebid, that's what the delay was, correct?
There was a technical default in the, in the original bid. It was rebid. We're recommending the low bidder for a bid award. This council would look to make that award, which would then move the project forward towards a contract and construction.
They didn't put any kind of dates in here, did they? In the bid package, it was when they think he did agree, Paul said it could be, it was going to be done.
This year, he says.
Yeah, okay. Any questions about that? What's in your packet? The bid that was enclosed?
20% is already allocated. Yes, this is a longstanding problem.
Yeah. But we pay up front and then get the 80 back, yeah. Correct?
Correct, reimbursement.
Yeah. You have a discussion about the Blair Ben paving bid? Okay, next item is ban smoking in parks. This was discussed a little bit, I think, on the workshops in front of the Recreation Committee. Mayor Ross, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, this came before Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec Director Harold brought it to my attention that it was this committee's desire to ban smoking in the parks here in Loudoun. And I wanted to bring this to your intention and your consideration, and see what this council thought about the matter.
Okay, discussion, anyone?
Does this also include the electronic cigarettes?
They be.
Yes.
It does.
This says?
Yes.
So there'll be no smoking whatsoever?
That's correct.
So I was down there the other night, and we were sitting up there next to the fence, watching grandkids play. There were a mother there with a newborn baby, and there was a guy sitting there smoking one of the vape cigarettes, and all that smoke was coming right back where they were. There were some other folks there, and they all got up and moved, and that's why I asked that question.
When would this go into effect? Next year, this year?
I think that's totally up to you guys.
Or soon, as maybe it gets passed.
Like I said, it'll go into effect July 1st, after we pass it. We're going to have quite a few things going on.
Will this be at our next meeting next week?
Can you get sound, just that period, about July 1st?
Mayor?
I'd like to come up front there.
Sure.
Mark, if you. I can mumble a little better up there, I guess, than I can back here.
Mark, if you could take the podium, that's a lot my saying.
Do what now?
That that microphone works.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The, where this came from, it's a state legislature passed, I think it's been about five months ago, through the committee, the opportunity for citizens, our governments to pass without any kind of repercussions, smoking bans in parks. It doesn't necessarily mean that all of parks is that you have the opportunity to do that. And so I brought it to the Recreation Advisory Committee for an opinion, and most know Dr. Gatter, which is our chairperson of the committee, was strongly in favor of banning it totally in the parks. My comment, I guess, maybe was more what you said, Councilman Dixon, is the fact that these electronic cigarettes are creating a bigger problem for us than the cigarette smoke itself, because people think we're safe. And we don't have a clue what's in those things, and no one knows at this point if that is damaging to the secondhand smoke is free, and a problem like cigarettes is free, and it's just not, it's really not ready yet. So the legislature's got the same thing, that while we're doing this, maybe we should ban electronic cigarettes as well. I don't know what happened, Chris may know more and do some research on this, but it kind of slows down a little bit, I guess, and behind the scenes, the last article I had was April 24th, it passed that all city and county playgrounds would be, would fall under this law, not parks. But we have the opportunity right now to be the first, or one of the first, in the state of Tennessee to do something that we need to do. And what's coming down the pipe, it's not so much that it's dirt, it's bonded, it's lawsuits, it's liability, and what happens when we allow people to smoke in the park, and it does create other problems. And so people are a little concerned about that. Do we address that? Do we address the health issues? You know, there's all kinds of different things out there that's bringing this to the forefront. So we looked up, and I think there are 10 municipalities right now that have total bans in parks, and there are several, including Otis County, that are jumping on playground initiative immediately. I mean, they're just saying no smoking in playgrounds. And it's going to be tough. It'll be a tough issue to tackle. And I appreciate, as a former person that used smokeless tobacco, it's that they're tough habits to quit. I did it for 20 years, and I know what it's like, but I also know what, you know, makes me good in my mother, and how it's destroying her life, so it's one of those dangers, you don't, you don't, but it's, I think it's time to start looking into it. As Councilman Brerker says, maybe we just don't drop the hammer immediately. We give the opportunity to folks to know that we are going to ban this, and it's coming down, you know, six months from now before we start. We go by the folks that are smoking, and we say, hey, we've got to quit that, you know, I'll go with the first official ban. So I ask that you consider that, maybe taking it a little bit slow, and not be the, I guess, the smoking police, and be careful.
I want to have those considered. How do the parks manage it? How do they control it?
Pretty much what I just said, it's kind of something that.
By the police control it, or do the, I mean?
No, no, it's the park official goes up to the person and tells them that, you know, if there is a smoking ban in this park, and we ask that you clear it out.
Seven o'clock at night, somebody's out there doing it, would, I mean.
They just get violent. And most, some of the times, you're going to tell the people that they have to put the cigarette out, and they're still going to smoke, come in here, going to smoke a boy, you know, it's not going to work. That's, I think if an ordinance is passed, if the police can, can enforce it, is that correct?
If we got a citation, we buy this order.
Yes, so that's that too.
Possibly you could put it, you could put it in, in effect, and put a grace period till everybody caught on to it, and because, put it off, only going to put it off, that's all it'll do. Sooner or later, you've got to do it. I mean, that's the bottom line. But you need some sort of a grace period, like, say, the 4th of July, there's going to be a lot of people down the park before 4th of July, be a good time to start saying, hey, look, you know, you maybe you're smoking now, but you can't, next time, you can't come smoke. You can't do it, we got to ban that. We're not going to enforce it tonight, but we're telling you all, be aware of that it will be enforced some point in time.
Well, I noticed at the last Carnival, there were people that were coming back out of the Carnival area and going to the smoking area next to the park. They were not allowing people, so it's, people are getting used to it. People realize it's coming, and they were being respectful to the folks that were at the park.
If we make an ordinance, it's going to take two readings, correct, Stephanie, and public hearings, and so, I mean, we have to go through that process, you know. But like I said, we could have, let people know that's what we're going to do, and then put the.
But it'll take a while for the word to get to general, because there's the same person not going to frequent it every time, anyway.
We already have an ordinance at Loudoun, it's the park in the Boston area, and so.
Yeah, do you just have a smoking area down there?
That's correct.
But I think the feds treat these cigarettes how just like cigarettes, do they not? That's what I bet you're.
They're not there yet, but it's, yeah.
They're treating them the same way?
They're trying to, they're trying.
You got to be certain age to buy them, and you know, that's just like a regular cigarette.
I understand the FDA has not regulated those in, in any form or fact, good or bad.
So what is, what continued discussion on that, considering that, considered?
We can put it on the agenda.
We can put it on the agenda, yeah.
Yep, get it started.
Okay, any more questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. Next item is a request for proposal for the Williamson House. Mayor Ross?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council expressed its desire to move the EBA from the Williamson House, and gave me permission to dispose of the property. What I would like to do is just talk through this possibility of a request for proposals. I've heard from a couple of different elected officials of the desire of different manufacturers or entrepreneurs that are currently in the industrial park to deal for the Williamson House in some sort of in-kind service or trade. That not being a cash transaction, I'd like to put forward an advertisement for proposals, just as we did for the depot, so that a, so transactions like that, all different types of transactions could be considered and heard by this spot.
I think that's consistent with what we've done, and that, you know, if it's consistent, I think we can stick with that. If you reach a proposal on its own merit.
There's no objection, I can simply move forward with the advertisement.
Okay, so I didn't take any kind of action? It's just an FYI for us?
Just an FYI.
Any other questions about going forward with that? Okay, so go ahead with that, and we'll get, get that rolling.
Yes, sir.
Next item is budget amendments, and I think there's, what, just one, Stephanie, that's listed here? That's the new street improvements, paving, I guess?
Yes, maybe for clarification. If we could, for possible scheduling wise, to fit repaving of the council approved paving list, the map that was presented to all in the group before the end of the fiscal year, we wanted to facilitate that by putting this budget amendment in motion.
Okay. You have a question about that? So that'll take, that'll take a little bit next Monday, so.
This, this, the bid award was approved by unanimous vote with Duracap, and this is a real-time discussion. Ellis, were they able to get back with you today?
Yes, the schedule right now is to start mid-June, but they will basically start milling at that point. Paving won't be until early July, but they would actually come on site and start milling.
Okay. They're going to start on Carding Machine Road, or they can start?
That's what I'm thinking.
He called today, he said they would definitely start milling, there's a possibility that they could have a carding machine done by a few other person, depending upon the weather.
What closure we have been?
Harrison's son's already out there working.
Yeah, yeah.
They're following the traffic down.
Highland Avenue is going to be in some complaints.
Six months.
Yeah.
We have, just FYI, we have asked the contractor to put out additional signage for all roads that approach Highland Avenue, that is a frequently used cut through, shortcut through town, old habits die hard, and I find myself to this day turning, turning my way towards Highland Avenue, I have to take a shortcut, and I have to catch myself and remind myself that work's going on. So I think those, that additional signage will be helpful.
Yeah, you're getting habits going another way, just like 321, just skip 321 and go down.
Yeah, where you live, you got to go right there.
Okay, well, next item on the agenda is other, other items. Anything? Yes, Bill?
Um, I do. I have actually spoke with you, Flynn, about this, so I'm going to let him kind of take over and tell you about this, but I got in contact with him because there is an emergency alert siren up on a tower, near his tower, and he's, he knows a lot about that stuff, I don't, but I'm one for emergency alert sirens, and we want to see where we're at with that and see what we can get involved in. I'll let bring that for the council to the sixth. So Chip, you, I'm going to let you take over.
Well, thank you, thank you for having me. The picture that we have up here is a siren that is currently located at the water tank there at the corner of Highland Avenue and Carding Machine Road. I happen to live next door, and as long as I've lived there, I've never known this to be used for anything. I did talk to one utility worker, and told him that years ago they got it turned on and couldn't get it turned off. There is another shot, if you would advance. There is still some electrical that appears to be connected to it, and it's an interesting starting point for the discussion, because if we have something, we talked about Sweetwater a little bit, Tammy and I did, and Sweetwater was fortunate enough to get a donation from TBA of some sirens that I guess they took down at Watts Park Nuclear Plant when they, they did a replacement. And I talked with Sweetwater Mayor Doyle Low, and he said that they frequently test there, there's, the fire department is responsible for setting them off if there's a tornado or something folks need to know about. And they test them on, I think, a weekly basis, and they also have a, something similar to a reverse 911 system that they implemented, where people can sign up, something similar to what utility boards use, where you can sign up to receive alerts by phone, and if there's a tornado warning, I think it can dial out many phones at one time, not only landlines, but cell phones as well. So if you have that in combination with the siren that we have, I think that would sort of be a backup plan, they could each complement each other. There's also a siren on top of the Parks and Rec building. Mark, you and I talked about that, has that ever been set off in, in your recent recollection?
I think you said this is the microphone here, so you can hear me well, but a similar situation, everyone was afraid to turn it on because we had heard the same story about Highland Avenue, because we had never tried it, and I don't even know where you would turn it on. Hope it was sprayed with good handle.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, who flips the switch? Where's the switch at?
Well, I will tell you about some technology that we use at the radio station, a little box like this right here connects to the internet, and I have an app, or it's actually a webpage that I can go to, put password protected access out there, and, you know, the fire chief can set it off, 911 can set it off, or whoever you designate, that would be up to you. But plug internet into this, and it can control anything. You can start your coffee pot with this if you want to. Not a real expensive unit, two or 300 bucks. And I think that'd be a starting point, if we could use what we have. I'm not proposing to go out and spend a whole chunk of money, but if we could get what we have working and then start maybe looking for some grant money, or, you know, work it in down the road and add more sirens on, I think that'd be a great thing, because there's a lot of folks who don't pay attention. I know that from the radio business, you can tell them something, sometimes they don't hear it. You know, if you're outside messing around in the yard and you don't have your phone with you, you hear the siren, you know, hey, something's happening. with you, you hear the siren, you know, hey, something's happening. And vice versa with the phone, if you're inside and you can't hear the siren, get a backup, so.
I think they were installed in 93, maybe, that tornado hit Linder City?
Yeah, I think so. And that, they...
There's also a company that rebuilds them, too.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's what Sweetwater did, is they had those refurbished. And they actually put theirs up sort of high and wound up moving them down because they were overshooting the population. So I'm not sure how many, they had, I think, three or four. But I would request that we test what we have and, you know, set a time and date so we don't scare anybody, put the word out, and test what we have, and if it works, maybe we can at least have some. I'm a big believer in something's better than nothing, at least we can get started with it.
Chief Rebecca, you, Chief Webb, have any history about it?
I, you're talking about 1993?
That's what I was saying.
I don't know if you were talking about that in the city hall. It was there whenever I was a kid, because I can remember without fail, every Saturday at noon, I would set that one off for a tale. You know, because my grandmother's house was right there around the corner, so I can remember that.
Well, I think that's what Travis was saying, that you thought they were initially for fire, Travis?
That was the story I...
They had a different person notify what the event was, to notify all the fire player involved.
So what, just strictly tornadoes, it was just...
I remember when I was a kid, there was one there at the end of Ward Avenue where it connects into Highland 11, it's sort of set up on a shelf on a pole, and I remember asking my parents what that was, and we could actually hear that way out in the country where we lived, so. And I do remember some Saturday tests, it seems like, so I'd like to at least try to test what we've got, with that being the prudent use of what, what we have, at least to try to make it usable.
Vino, can you get some of your guys to test those?
We can look into it, but I have no idea at this point, we'll just have to look at it.
There'd be a...
I don't know, but I don't know anything about any of them. The one you were talking about out there on Ward Avenue, I remember that one well when I was growing up. They, they checked that every week, you know? And I remember one, I was talking about two down on top of the building, but I can't remember that one up there at the water tank.
There's a, there's like a, a switch, it's on a, like a fuse box type switch?
Yeah.
Down at the bottom of the pole.
When you saw that they lived next to it, maybe they could visit.
Well...
Somebody lives next to it, I'm really tired.
I don't, that, that kind of thing didn't really bother me.
I don't know, Bill Watkins might know something about it.
That's true.
Manager Ross, what's your, what's your suggestion?
I'll talk to, to Bill Watkins, Aubrey Cagle, Clifton Henry, the electrical engineering team, and see, see if they can have a look at this and offer us some advice.
Okay, thanks for talking.
I'll offer any, any help or any of that of the radio station that I can offer us to go ahead and do.
Yeah, I just, someone happened to call Chip one day and say, hey, that siren's up there, what do you know about it? And he knew a lot about it, because he'd already kind of looked into this.
I guess I'd seen it at some point and asked, asked somebody about it.
Okay, well, just pass it over to Manager Ross and let him look into it. Thanks, Chip.
Okay, thank you all.
I consider putting up a third site, a third site perhaps right here, because you've got all those new homes that have been built over here in Sweetwater Creek, and then of course Green Acres, and then it's where the Park on beyond it.
Yeah.
I don't know that all those folks up out there would hear the one closest to it with the car machine, I don't know that here right now.
Okay, you can check into that.
Can I also add that I have a, the remnants of some facilities out behind the stop and shop, where we had a, an antenna at one time, that could probably be pressed into service if it needed to be.
Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Phillips?
My only other question is, when's Jack Paul's due to give us an update? It's been a while, and I just wanna make sure that, because he said something about giving us quarterly updates.
Quarterly?
It's probably about time for that, I didn't know if, if he has that on his schedule, if that's something that we're gonna contact him about. I just kind of wanted to make sure that we're, you know...
I'll, I'll look at the, if we, the demolition proposal with Hutch coming up, we should have some good information to report.
Yeah. We got sanitation meeting tomorrow, if anybody wants to come talk about trash.
Trash talking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
That's all we got.
All right, Councilor Brewster?
I've got quite a few names, but first thing I had to bring up was about our, our building maintenance. We've got a lot of new buildings. If we don't do something to get a preventative maintenance program up, to get someone dedicated to taking care of all of our buildings with utilities, with all they got, we're gonna wind up with buildings here like they are downtown, so we need to seriously think about maybe adding a maintenance position into our public works department to, to a preventative maintenance program, our filter changes, because there's something daily that's gotta be done to our buildings.
Some fresh discussion, you and I can, can have, that's good information.
Queen of Rose, I just wanted to update on that.
There's, just still, just still a handful, less than five parcels remaining that we wanna secure agreements on. One of those is a commercial property, that borders Highway 72. We've ordered a commercial appraisal of that, it was $2,500 through a, a GDOT-approved appraiser, that's in process, and we're, we're awaiting that.
The other holdouts, did we, we had started a court process with them, like we discussed?
No, we have not started any sort of condemnation yet.
Oh, we need to go ahead and do that?
Let me, let me, let me get an update from Jack and see where we were with those last couple of conversations.
I know some of them came through that he was working on that was holdout, something he got, one in particular that was a holdout that came through, I think there's still a few more.
Next thing is Green Acres, the goat farm. I would recommend that we, it's, the permit we gave the guy, it's really not worth the paper it's written on, so we can go ahead, I recommend we withdraw that permit, and then work up, come up with some kind of plan with our animals, farm animals that's in city limits, because it's gonna be an ongoing problem, and maybe we can come up with a ordinance banning all farm animals whatsoever in city limits, and grandfather the people that have the farm animals down, once they're gone, no more. Something we need to look into, because the goat farm has really turned into a big headache.
I did catch wind of that issue in Green Acres, and I contacted MTS specifically Melissa Ashburn about some potential ordinances we can look at. We did review ordinances from other cities that did ban these type of livestock animals within the city limits, except with a permit, which would be, which would be pre-approved, so there's some avenues that we can go down, and what I can do is, is bring to your next workshop some ordinances for you to consider.
Okay. Yeah, I think we would have to pull the permit, we'd have to declare a public nuisance, I guess, correct Travis?
Yes.
Is that not the premise?
That's right.
So...
So we can go ahead and do that, and put that on the agenda, go ahead and get that taken care of. You can steal out an animal because the ordinance allows it, so let's go ahead and get rid of this permit, get it out of the way as soon as possible, then work on changing the ordinance.
Well, I think all you would need to do is put an acreage allowance on it, and a subdivision like Green Acres, with those lots the size they are, there's no place for parrots, there's just no place. You don't have room for them. Like Mayor Greenway, ex-Major Greenway, he's got a farm inside the city limits, that's a different situation, how many acres are you on there?
In the city, there's about 30.
That's a different story.
Yeah.
I, I would say that we could say, if you don't have at least an acre lot, you can't have animals. Because some of these, some of these lots are half-acre.
Yeah.
And that's barely a half-acre.
Yeah, we brought in the same livestock animals.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, there's, there's no, there's no place for them in a, in a situation like that. I don't feel sorry for the animals, I feel sorry for the people that are very responsible that puts them there. You know, I, I, I wouldn't want them to side bed, I don't think any of us in this room would want them to side. And, and, and the mistake was made, to issue this amount of permits to start with, and he certainly took advantage of it in every way he could. I mean, it's just...
I don't know if it was a mistake, I mean, we've issued permits before for animals, it wasn't just to him.
But they could have...
Well, I had a neighbor that had four chickens, she had them inside a cage, you've never heard of chickens, you know? See, all she done was collect the eggs and feed the chickens. They didn't, they didn't get out, they didn't roam over the neighborhood. But 10 goats, a dozen geese, I don't know how many, what else he's got down there, chickens and everything else. Any yard that's the size everybody else's yard.
That's how he's been, he's got a half-acre.
Eh, maybe a half-acre with his house and everything.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be, that'd be tops.
What's your last turn, Frank?
I think that several of the ordinances that Tyler's gonna bring to you have those kind of restrictions in it, that said basically if you've got this much land, you can have this, if you've got that much land, then, you know, you can have a, a dog or something like that.
That's the only answer to it, I don't tell them, you know?
So we'll review them, then you bring those to us.
Mayor Harris, you've got 4H kids at school that, you know, get animals too, you need to consider that, but...
Good point.
You're talking about the school, high school?
I'm talking about even elementary school.
Well, high schools, they can have animals, but that's county property down there.
4H students have it at their home.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll raise for a show or whatever, you know?
Right.
So I'm sure that allowance is probably some of the language of the ordinances that go...
But, but wouldn't it be a good idea to go ahead for this Monday meeting, declare the public nuisance, pull the permit, and work on the ordinance?
Yes, sir, this council has the ability...
That'd be a council decision, sure.
I think you should word in it some way, if they become a nuisance, you know, you can definitely get away from it, you know? It's...
I'll read that.
Well, it, it certainly, it's, 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 it's...
Travis Gray, Chris Frye, and I would all discuss this, and the declaration, the declaration of a nuisance, if this situation is untenable, is, is, is the pathway out.
Is that the recommendation of everybody?
Yeah.
I think that was the citizens that came to the meeting, they did...
That's your recommendation, too, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So we'll put it on the agenda. Anything else?
Okay, Mark, we're waiting on this one, Mark. Okay, next year we've got a election coming up, and we talked about before that we're gonna address the political sign camp thing, signs on the rideways. Campaigns will start going up this October, signs will start going up, so if we're gonna do something, we need to get it done, because it's gonna take a couple of readings to pass.
Well, you're talking about, well, right now, and I think there's some history here dating back to strikes and what have you, where there's just an outright ban of signs. If you wanna carve out an exception for, for elections, you're right, sir, now, now would be the time to do that.
You, you need to allow them or not allow them?
Allow them so many days before the election.
Oh, okay, and have to be took up so many days?
Exactly. Because if you don't, come October for the May and next election, the signs will start going up, and there'll be a shooting process.
That's also some, we could get some language for some other...
Well, I thought we'd already started doing it.
Oh, we may have, yeah.
I think you said codes or planning was working on something, you told me that circa lunch.
We talked about that during campaign, so yes, we could put that together.
Okay, that wouldn't take any action at this point in time until it's presented to us, but it's probably something you'd be thinking about.
Okay, everybody knows, or most everybody knows about the problem we have at the landfill when it rains. We do have a city ordinance against mud, tracking mud on our highways. I talked to Barry, and I'm just letting the council know, we affect it immediately, our next big rainstorm, Barry's gonna send his guys out and start issuing warnings about tracking the mud on the roads. And we'll give them so many days or so many months, whatever you wanna do, to start writing citations for it. And what that will do, these trucking companies that haul this garbage, will get on the sand tag, saying, okay, they're ratting my driver's tickets, and go sure they can track mud in the road. So if we go ahead and start doing this, start issuing citations, Sandtag is more likely to get something done quicker, because if they don't, they'll start taking their garbage somewhere else. The sand tag was in the process of putting it in, in the process of two years.
So it's still waiting to know. See, I anticipated after all that rain we had this weekend, that when they got going this morning, it would be bad.
It's gonna...
Yeah.
Um, they have been making efforts on it, I mean, it's, and it's a losing battle with those big trucks. And it's very frustrating, they're frustrated, we're frustrated.
Neighbors are frustrated.
Neighbors are frustrated, everybody's frustrated over it. We are working on all the, the new contract that they proposed to us, a state-of-the-art wheel wash is supposed to be in that, that's one of those things, you don't know how it's gonna work, do you? Get it, get it in there, you know, there's no guarantee.
That's still in discussions, that's still in discussions for that.
The, the new, it's in this new contract, it's, and that was something we made sure of, that wheel wash was still going to be placed.
But, you know, that's something she could bring up at a meeting tomorrow night?
Well, we have.
About, I mean, about the citations, oh, you have, okay.
We have, and...
We just gotta make believers out of them.
Our concern there is, that I brought up at the meeting was, you know, your guys with the CDLs, they start getting citations, that goes against them personally.
Yeah, they listen.
Even in our city trucks, so, you know, they go against anybody with the CDLs, so if they get a citation, it'll hurt them. And that's a worry. But I'll be honest with you, where's the next nearest landfill? I'm on the ride that long.
Chief Webb, you have anything to add to that?
No, we've, we've been watching it for the last couple of weeks, and like I said, I anticipated this morning while it rained there this weekend, that those trucks, if you start bringing a bunch of mud out, it's, it's, you know, it's not been bad.
Okay.
So we're watching it.
Okay.
And there are times that the trucks go past, they don't stop, they don't take the time to drive the wheel wash like they should, and, and that is where mud stops, so...
Takes too long to draft it there.
It does take too long, it's too rough on your vehicle.
You think that's, Council Brewster?
Yeah, I've had some county people on Trailview Drive, we have a water tower over there that really looks terrible, I know you've got a schedule for painting of Trailview Drive. I'll give you...
Castle River, yeah, or Arnold Hawkins.
That's just barely, is, is that in the city back there?
That, that, that water tower's in the city, yeah, and, and there's three acres adjacent to it, there's, there's no buildings on it, it's...
Yeah, and part of that was, is the line over there, yeah.
It's kind of like a little island, I don't know how they did that, it was like a little island.
But the towers are...
The tower block, but the point of trying to make is you think, it's a base, it's terrible.
Yeah, it's a base, just trying to paint it off something.
Paint it.
Quick painting, right, it's targets for Russia if they wanna come along with this number of...
Oh, yeah. Anything else?
Well, we still haven't come up with a definite Parks and Rec location, and then that, what I was trying to work on the Williamson House, Jeff Annes, who's done his concrete, really wants a new Williamson House, and he's willing, when we can decide on a location and come up with the drawing, did, did that ever happen, the drawing?
No, sir.
I think he would put in a, a request for proposal, just like anybody else, I think.
That's fine, but pulling around me, we gotta come up with a definite location before we can come up with some drawing.
That be part of the conversation that we're going to the proposal?
And his proposal does.
But he has to know what we want?
We have to, we have to talk to each other, absolutely, yes, sir.
So you're gonna make that happen? You'll talk to him, or Mark?
Mark, Mark and I both will make that happen.
So you, who will decide on a, does it take the council vote to decide on a location? Or, I mean, would that just...